Off the road and then the pickleball courts and the cart storage barn. That area will be the third site plan I talk about here tonight. So, starting with the cafe site plan. We are demoing the existing cafe, rebuilding a new one, it's very similar footprint. This will be one story, which is very important from a height perspective to those residents just adjacent to this. It's about 1,800 square feet. We have a screened outdoor seating area, covered porch seating that you can see there on your screen. This is adjacent to the 10th green, so you're halfway through your golf round. You can get a bite to eat, get a drink. And we do have golf cart parking. And just to state for the record, this is not accessible by car. So this is only people either walking or going by golf cart. And getting into the architecture, we wanted to keep it consistent with our proposed clubhouse. So a coastal architectural style, about 14 feet tall. We've added some decorative elements like louvers and brackets. And really, it's primarily made of stucco with some aluminum accents. So the second site plan here tonight is the maintenance facility site plan. This is centrally located. Remember, the biggest piece of this is we're shifting and relocating the existing maintenance facility and putting it into our site. So getting it off of Country Club Drive. And this is really important for our operations, just functioning of golf course maintenance. Significant landscaping will be around this facility. We really wanted to sink this in and shield it from the rest of the course. We're trying to hide this facility. And as I move over to the next slide here, you can see that these are just standard metal maintenance buildings built for efficiency and built for our operations. And they will be painted green to blend in with the landscape, blend in with the course. We're trying to hide these again. And my last, well, not my last slide, but the last site plan here. Going over towards Country Club Drive, where the previous maintenance facility was. We have a variety of different buildings. So just going from left to right on your screen, we have the cart storage building, we have the chemical storage building, and then we have the fuel island and recycling center. And then we have bins that will have sand and other materials used for maintenance purposes. But you can see the big parking lot area there. That's all pavement. That's only for employees of the maintenance crew and occasionally staging of some vehicles if needed. That's not a very common occurrence, but sometimes we need to bring in a little bit larger vehicles for maintenance purposes onto the course. And that's during off hours, of course. We do have the new pickleball court location. So if you're looking at your screen to the right, off of that red line would be where the existing pickleball courts are. We're shifting those over and it'll be completely new courts, state-of-the-art courts. We have a shade structure there, very nice. And then, of course, gated entry. So that parking lot area is not for customers, guests, members. That's only for employees of the maintenance crew. And very similar to the primary maintenance building, these buildings are basically the same. So standard metal building, they're a little shorter, so 13 feet tall, painted green just to blend in with the course. We're trying to screen these from Country Club Drive as well, so a lot of landscaping along Country Club Drive. So just to note before my closing statement here, we do fully satisfy all of the special exception criteria in the code. Happy to answer any questions, just didn't want to kind of bore you with some of that criteria. But we, staff has deemed that we do satisfy all those criteria. And approval of these applications, of course, will provide the critical framework in our Phase One of this full development plan, eventually getting to the clubhouse in Phase Two, as you all know. So enhancing service and efficiency for the club amenities and strengthening the longstanding use of the golf course. So with that, I will turn it over to Meg. I'm sure she has a presentation for you all. But again, I'm here, Lori's here, the club reps are here, very happy to answer any questions. Thank you very much. Actually, good evening PCB, Jay Hopps, Community Development Director. I was just going to do a quick kickoff on the first slide before Meg gets started. Meg, can you click it to the next one? So as noted, there are going to be two phases here. And we just wanted to show you a little bit of a glimpse of what Phase One will look like. So that is at the top there, that's going to be the new clubhouse and cart barn. And we just wanted you to know that those have been designed to be kind of in concert with Phase Two, right? So that whatever gets approved tonight will be consistent with what comes forward in Phase Two. We are pretty far along in the site plan review process, so we don't really expect any real shifts from that future site plan. And timing wise, the club is eager to really get started on some of these maintenance facilities and the cafe. And so because of that, that's why we kind of work with them to break it into phases so that they could get that approval first and so that we could have a little bit more time to dig in on our review of the clubhouse. And with that, I'll kick it over to Meg.
Good evening Board, Meg Wacko with Community Development. Thank you for that Jay. So we are looking at the Dequesta Country Club parcel. This has been located in the heart of Dequesta since 1957. They are proposing a renovation project that will eventually include the clubhouse, but right now we are focusing on the maintenance facilities. So this is a breakdown of the phases and the structures. The green circle in the upper right, that is your Phase Two. So we will not be looking at that today. But the red and orange circles, that is the maintenance facilities and the cafe house that we're going to be looking at. In association with this, there is a future land use amendment and a special exception use that needs to be reviewed. The second reading of Ordinance 0825 and 0925, which addresses the future land use amendments, was passed on November 13th by the Village Council by a vote of 5-0. The special exception use review will be conducted by Village Council when they look at these site plans. So we're focusing on Phase One. We have the cafe, we have the interior maintenance facility, and then we have the maintenance facility that is along Country Club Drive. The proposed interior maintenance facility has two structures. One is about a 9,000 square foot building. And then the second one is an 800 square foot covered parking area. This is the first building that we talked about. And the covered parking area adjacent to it. Space and use, the site would be used for offices, workshop, tools, break room, restroom, showers. Additional features, this metal building with concrete masonry elements and a standing seam roof enclosed by an eight-foot concrete wall. So the eight-foot concrete wall will be six feet on the exterior. It's going to have like two different elevations. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not going to be a huge eight-foot wall when you're standing outside looking in. Okay, located along the west of Country Club Drive, we have the second portion of the maintenance facilities. So proposed structures, we have a cart storage building, a chemical storage, fuel islands, and material storage bins. Proposed enhancements, they have four new pickle courts coming in, shaded area for players, and onsite golf cart parking. So on the right is what is currently there. On the left is what they are proposing. We have the cart storage building. It's approximately 3,500 square feet. It's located on the south of that lot. And then the chemical storage, fuel island, and material storage bins. And now the pickleball courts. So these are going to be four regulation-sized courts. It will have a shaded area for their members. And across the way, there is eight golf cart parking spots. Again, colors and details of all of the buildings. Now we're moving to the cafe. So the cafe is extremely internal to the site. You cannot access it by car, it's only for the members. Here on the right, you can see what is currently in place. On the left is what is proposed. Cafe will include a service counter, kitchen area for members, covered seating for comfort, restrooms, and will supply the members of the Dequesta Golf Club. Here are the proposed colors of the building. It's very in line with Phase Two as well. The surrounding area is residential, so this is kind of what it looks like down Country Club Drive. So landscaping. So when you're going down Country Club Drive, we all love the beautiful trees that we have. This is an AI rendition of the proposed landscape buffer that the applicant has brought forth. So this is not provided by them. This is basically me putting dimensions into the computer, trying to sort things out. So in the back, we have silver button wood. Next is potocarpus, it's about a six to eight-foot hedge, and then red-tipped cocoa plum in the front. So you've got three different levels there. Additional landscaping. I have another slide that's hidden, but they did a job on landscaping. Lots of variety, lots of Florida native plants that they've proposed. Elements of site plan review, so this is what you will be looking at as you review the submission, harmony with other buildings, harmony with the surroundings, facade, methods of design, inappropriate building styles, garage design, exterior forms, advertisements on amenities, use of symbolic colors. Oops, sorry. Proposed redevelopment is consistent with the previous use. Proposed site and site design architectural elements are in line with the surrounding residential. The landscaping is approximately 81% Florida native and the remaining species are Florida friendly. The maintenance operations and cafe uses are internal to the golf course. They are screened from view and they are supported by adequate circulation. And the building colors and materials are harmonious with the existing club structures. There are a few conditions of approval attached with this. Prior to the issuance of building permits, civil plans shall be provided that indicate the existing and proposed pervious impervious areas. Drainage calculations shall be submitted and approved that demonstrate the project meets the village's storm water treatment requirements. Next, prior to the issuance of building permits, a maintenance of traffic plan shall be submitted and approved by the village. And finally, prior to the issuance of building permits, a construction staging plan shall be submitted and approved by the village. Thank you.
Thank you, Meg.
Do you have any questions or slides that you want me to go over again?
Teresa?
No.
I have a couple of questions, but you don't have to go over everything.
Okay, who? Want to talk about zombie palms?
Okay, well, okay. On the, I got three different things going here. On the maintenance facility, I had one question, and that was on the building in itself. What category will that building, since it's metal, withstand for hurricane?
Oh, so in terms of the actual terminology, I'm not sure. But all of these buildings need to withstand the hurricane wind load in the wind zone that it is. It won't be approved without it.
Okay, because there wasn't anything that was identified in here as to whether or not it met the codes, so that's why I'm asking.
That's a great piece of feedback. We will include that prior to council and make sure that is written in the record.
No, I definitely, I would, because that was number one, a concern of mine. And my other main, I really liked how you did the pickleball courts and the cafe. But now I'm trying to find my map because there was, God, now I'm going to drive you crazy.
I have the maintenance facility along.
Well, it's this map. It's dealing with the fire trucks. There's a site plan and on how the fire truck is going to get into the cafe. Do they have, is it a regular roadway or do they just go like a barrel of ton out to the facility wherever the fire or whatever is, or the ems?
So there's a path running adjacent to our cafe. It's a stabilized path, it's 20 feet wide to fire by fire. And that path needs to be within less than 50 feet of the nearest entry door, which is far.
All right, I was trying to figure that out, but the print was so small. And I took a picture and I tried and, you know, it just wasn't working.
There is something in here about the fire lane.
Yeah, well, but I just, you know, it was just confusing at one point. But that's it. Otherwise, it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful job. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Definitely be an asset to the community.
Very much appreciate it.
Jeannie, do you have any questions? Marie?
I do have a couple. So on the, I appreciate the screening. I do, most of my questions pertain to that. First, the vinyl chain link fences, are those going to be, it looks like those are going to be, as I understood it from the renderings, that those will be screened with landscaping. But I wanted to ask if you can say if these are completely screened from view, especially where they're in line of sight from houses and the roads.
Yes, absolutely. We can, yes, stay up.
Good. The other question I had was, what color is the eight-inch wall that's around the, or the, sorry, eight-foot wall around the maintenance facility?
Good question, actually. I don't think we provided the color on the detail.
Are you hearing? You guys said that it was.
Yes, it's all of the, oh, sorry, Lori Hood with color and hearing. All of the walls and fencing are going to be the same green. Great, okay, great. So it'll also be screened with the, okay, perfect. The, one point on lighting, especially, I understand you need functional lighting, but like where the lighting is highly visible to the homes and the streets, especially the parking lot lighting, and I know we're not doing the parking lot portion here, but I was just, would ask that you please ensure that those are the more traditional.
Can we wait on that question till we get to that?
So it was actually in this site plan on page 135. There were several examples there where there was some modern, more utilitarian designs. And then I wanted to point out that black or green Washington concrete are nice-looking poles, and I'd like to see more of those, especially where they're invisible from homes and from the streets. Unrelated to the aesthetics, it said in the backup that you did outreach to neighbors. And I just wanted to make sure that you've spoken with the neighbors whose home is going to be next to the cart storage building and that that would be completely screened for them. The ones.
There it is. I think everything's.
Okay, so there, all right, good. Then I assume they're on board. I just wanted to make sure that they're being completely shielded. And then also, there's some mention of noise mitigation measures on page 61. And I was wondering if you could explain what those were.
And Jay, you can help me out if you can on this. I believe that's a monitoring effort following construction for noise mitigation. I think that's just a standard of, you know, the building permit. I'm not sure what we're referring to, I apologize.
It's okay. It might pertain to the next part. I don't, it's mentioned that there was noise mitigation measures that were being.
Yeah, but that's on the next site, that's on.
Well, so I think it might have been the moving of the pickleball courts, but I wasn't sure if there were particular ones that you had in mind there. It's okay.
So the pickleball courts, just for the record, we are meeting with the pickleball committee. I apologize, I don't know their exact organization name, but just making sure that we meet all of their expectations, what they want. I mean, they're the, you know, most frequent users of the pickleball courts. So we're showing you the, you know, the design that we're going forward with, but there may be minor enhancements to some of the materials and stuff. It's still going to look the exact same, but minor enhancements to the materials, maybe additional noise mitigation, I'm not sure. But we're working that out with them right now, so.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. And are there any, opening the floor to public comments? Closing the floor to public comments. How would the board like to proceed?
I will make a motion to approve the application from the Dequesta Country Club. Recommendation to the Village Council for the application of the Dequesta Country Club for the site plan modification for site improvements and landscape enhancements at the current maintenance facility, the halfway house cafe site located in the R-op district, recreational open space zoning district. The proposed use will not change as all structures continue to the existing Dequesta Country Club Drive. Thank you.
If I can interject, can you add the proposed conditions of approval to that?
I was going to ask, do we need to add those conditions?
That should be made part of the motion.
Okay.
Okay, the proposed conditions, oh, for, yeah, and for the proposed conditions, I'm sorry, I've lost everything. Okay, thank you.
Do we need to state the proposed conditions?
No, it's in the staff report.
It's in the staff report, since everything was itemized.
Yeah, okay.
We're covered there.
Okay, okay, so everything is okay then. And do we have a second for SPM 07-25?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor of recommending SPM 07-25? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. We can, we'll take a little break.
We're good.
Oh, you're okay?
We're good. Let's not push it.
Okay, I'm on a roll here. Okay, we will now proceed with SPM 05-25, application by Village of Dequesta for site plan modification for exterior and site modifications on an existing 3,069 square foot building located in the R1 Residential Zoning District. The property will continue to be used as an office and a storage space for the village. The property is situated at 465 Seabrook Road, Dequesta, Florida.
Jay Hopps, Community Development Director, bringing back Station 11 to, or as we're actually calling it, the Village Annex. Oh, sorry, I need to clicker here. Thank you, Meg. So I believe everybody was here at the last meeting, correct, when we discussed this? So you're familiar with the site. Here's your current conditions. Just a quick summary, at that August meeting, we brought one rendering to you and we also showed you what the Dequesta Recreation Center looked like and what kind of color palette they used, and suggested that you possibly consider incorporating some colors from that building into the design rather than what our architect had come up with. At the time, the board wanted to see what the building would look like with enhanced landscaping and would actually like to see what it would look like with those colors on it. So we went back to the drawing board, we got the village architect Steve Parker to come up the landscape plan, and we got updated renderings which show what the landscaping will look like with the two colors. So I'll roll through these. Here's your initially proposed architecture, standing seam metal roof, new exterior color, new color with roll-up doors and decorative stone on the outside. So this one is still being proposed. Here's the Dequesta Recreation Center with that kind of blue color, which is also in the Village of Dequesta logo, right? So there's, I think, a little bit of a Dequesta feel to that blue color. Here's another rendering of that, so it's called Sherwin-Williams Blue Blood. Here's the standing seam metal roof. So here's the landscape plan we came up with. It maintains the live oaks that are along Seabrook. There are three sable palms proposed in front of the building, two silver button woods at the entrance, three geiger trees. It maintains the existing live oaks and adds one new live oak on the Shea Place side of the property. On the front, as we pointed out the last meeting, the landscape hedge along Seabrook Drive is really lacking. It's not up to the village standard. It's not up to any standard, really. It's embarrassing. So what Steve Parker's come up with is a cocoa plum hedge with an emerald blanket ground cover. He's also working some collugia into the side, the south side of it. And what we did too is we designed it so that a future shared use path could be added on the Seabrook Road. So when we had our mobility plan done recently, one of the suggestions was to create this really cool bike and pedestrian trail all the way from Riverside Drive all the way to Jelona. And part of that would be to have a 10 to 12-foot shared use path on Seabrook. So we designed this landscape plan to ensure that a future, if there was ever funding or a political appetite for it, that we would be able to actually construct that. And also, the village manager has expressed some interest in adding two on-street parking spaces on Shea Place, possibly for overflow parking at Remembrance Park or even a Constitution Park, just, you know, it's kind of an underutilized space. So this was designed to also potentially add those two spaces in the future, which you can kind of see there on the north end of the property. So here is rendering one. So this is the blue color from the rec center with those three nice sable palms, which kind of help, you know, make the building pop a little bit. You see the silver button woods there at the entrance. Those are kind of nice ornamental trees. They won't interfere with the live oaks, but they'll create a little bit of color and something kind of in the understory. And then you've got your Carissa Emerald Blanket and your cocoa plum. And here is the kind of the gray color, which is what the architect had originally come up with. So I'll let you kind of look at both of these. We are not recommending either of the two. I have a personal preference for one of them. But we're going to present both of these colors to you and to the Village Council to see which one is preferred. So your typical criteria for review, I will belabor that, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. I like the blue.
Can I have the floor? This is not the troublemaker.
Sure. Any questions for Jay? Or any comments about either of these?
I like the blue.
I like the gray.
I can honestly say a 360-degree turnaround from what you were. The original presentation, which I saved and all of our notes to this. I mean, it's like night and day.
So the building department has been, was trying to do this on a shoestring budget. So I appreciate you guys kind of pushing us to do more because I think it's led to a better outcome here. So I appreciate that.
And, I mean, I like, I like the muted colors, the gray, which I originally liked the blue, but I really liked this whole rendering with the gray because it's different. I mean, the building will stand out because right next to it is the white. And then you've got, where do you live? Just went right out of my head. Dequesta Gardens.
I walked past it to go to the park.
Yeah, but I just have one, why did Steve put a tree in the middle? We've got three, I mean, that tree with the landscaping, depending upon what's coming in and out of there.
So there is enough clearance. We measured it to make sure there'd be clearance. There won't be fire trucks coming in anymore. I can't remember the exact number, but I think it was, there's still something like, I don't even want to put a number out there, but there is enough clearance to get cars through there. We're also not anticipating driving cars in there. It's going to be primarily storage. The police department's going to be doing some training in there. Yeah. So I personally think it looks better with a three.
Better? I mean, I.
Oh, yeah, definitely, yeah. Well, I was just trying to figure out, because I was just trying to think of what equipment would be coming in and out, but I just love the whole rendering. Thank you, thank you.
Landscaping changes every year. Hope it looks like this eventually.
And do you have any, no comments? Marie?
I do have a couple of comments. I appreciate the landscaping a lot. I think with this building, much like in the previous presentation, we're looking to scream it from you. I do like the blue color, but I don't actually like it on the garage doors. I actually think it would be better because, like I said in the last meeting, I don't like the doors, the doors for people on this building. They look like an office park to me, which I don't think is appropriate in the residential area. And I would like to make it look a little more like a residential building since it's right next to homes and to condos. So what I would suggest is actually, because I do think we should keep the blue color going through the village. I think that's a nice way to subtly mark it as a Dequesta building. What I would suggest instead is maybe a door with a half window in the top that you can paint blue for the entrance doors on either side. I think then you would get a little bit of color in it.
What I'm saying, Marie, you're talking so fast, we can't.
Okay, sorry. So my suggestion is to take the blue and change out the doors from the office building doors to more residential doors with a half window in the top. And if you need to identify there, you can put it there and make the doors that blue so that you know where the doors are in a building, because I think, especially on the front of the building, you need to say, this is where you walk in.
The public won't be using.
No, I know. But this is for blending it into the neighborhood.
No, I know, but I, so, uh, this is for blending it into the neighborhood purposes, not for the public's access. Um, so that would be my proposal for the blue. Leave the gray so that the doors are less obvious, and then move the blue onto the doors, um, which I'm sure we can do in a very nice way. Um, the, um...
There's a door.
The, the entrance doors on the side.
So she's saying rather than be glass, it would be like what you'd, what you'd see in a single-family home.
Right.
But it's not a single-family home.
I guess, are they double doors, or, it's hard to tell on the rendering.
But you need to remember, it's not a single-family home.
No, I know, but it's in a single...
It's a commercial building, and you need to look at the site plan as a commercial building.
Liz, we'll let her finish and everything.
Yeah, um, so actually, is, uh, I didn't check the zoning on this, but I think that since everything around it is residential, I think we owe it to the residents to try and blend it in as much as possible, which I think we're moving towards with the landscaping. Um, I do have a question. There's gonna be a new fence on the side next to Dequesta Gardens. Do you know what kind of fence that's going to be?
It was going to be the, I believe the exact same fence that's already on...
Existing fence.
Well, there's an existing one at Dequesta Gardens, and they wanna just continue that all the way through.
Okay, the only reason I asked was, um, if that means screening from their side, like, I think we should aim to not impose on neighbors, right? So if I'm, if they are, if the conveniences are okay with that, that's...
Yeah, there's, there's already a landscape buffer there on the condo side. We wanted to put the fence and have our own collusion on our side of it.
Okay, um, the, and then on the landscaping, I do, how, I don't know how tall sable palms get. Are those going to eventually, like, I like them screening the roofline there and breaking it up a little bit, but are they gonna end up way above it at some point, but in the near future? That's my only concern with those.
That's a good question for, for Steve Parker. Um, they will, at some point, probably grow up a little taller. Um, if we needed to, we could, you know, sables aren't extremely expensive, so there, there could also be an opportunity to just replace them if they, let's say they grew up five or 10 feet taller than the roofline. Um, we could come back in and replace them at a fairly cheap cost.
And that's gonna be yours.
And it'd be, it'd be yours down the road, but that, that's a good, I mean, that's a good point long-term, but that's something that we could, we could resolve pretty easily.
Okay. I'd like to make sure that happens for, since we're using them in that capacity, which I like. Um, and then, also in the realm of breaking things up, I don't know if there's enough room for this, but the white walls that are now behind the silver buttonwood, um, on, and next to the entrance doors, is it possible to fit a very small tree in there to cover those two? I just think we need, I think more is more on this one to get to shield it.
There's limited width there between the, between the parking lot, so, but there are, and this doesn't show the perspective perfectly, but those sea grapes there do...
Will they come over? Yeah, if we could let them grow over so that it's a little more screening of the building, I think that would be good. Um, and my other point is more minor. The silver buttonwoods, I think they're fantastic plants. I would actually like to see them more tree-like, not sculpted like that.
This is just a demonstration, not really.
Yeah, I understand, but I just wanted to make a, make the, not popsicle-shaped silver buttonwoods more natural.
It's just clip art. It's just clip art.
Yeah, they did that, yeah, they did that more, um, for the illustration purpose, but, but to your point, I, I agree, and we would make them more natural.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah.
And this doesn't have the little free library in it. Are we keeping that, or is that gonna be moved somewhere else?
The what?
The little free library? It's right in front. It's where, close to where the, so, it would be next to the silver buttonwood.
It would be right next to it. It's there now.
Yeah, it's there now.
What, what is that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, the library.
I thought we moved it to Remembrance Park.
One of the, there, I think there's a new one there. Has it moved?
Is this...
No, it go, it went into the, it went into Remembrance Park. Cuz that was the whole big thing.
So this is an old picture.
If it's there, it'll be gone. I didn't even look.
You're correct. It's, it, uh, it's moved to Remembrance Park.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um, and then on the point of parking on Shea Place, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I think we should ask the residents who live along there before we add public parking onto their street.
It's just two.
Yeah, I know, but I, I mean, if someone was gonna put public parking on front, right, right next to my house, I'd kind of want to know too.
Would you turn that way?
So I would request that, um, that be included as a, like, condition of approval, that down the road, if there is a plan to put that in, that they be consulted.
Sure, and, and we're, we're technically not, had, don't have any plans to move forward with it. We just wanted to design a landscape plan that wouldn't prohibit that from happening down the road.
You don't need to ask now, but I would say before that happens, I would like to ask them. And the, I guess, one other question. Since you said we're leaving space for the, um, walking path, are we leaving some, just bringing the cocoa plums out and just, they'll be, some of them will be expendable if we need to take them out, or is it all gonna be?
It, it would all remain as is.
Oh, so, wait, uh, I mean, is there, there's, will there be cocoa plums and then grass, or we're going cocoa plums to the sidewalk as it currently stands?
There'd be cocoa plum and the emerald blanket, and then still some grass area, and then, and then the sidewalk.
Okay, all right, so we, yeah.
Cuz the sidewalk, yeah, the sidewalk is five feet, and we've, we've left five, basically five feet for it to expand, encroach closer to the, to the collusion, I mean, to the cocoa plum.
And it does say it's designed to be able to add the wider sidewalk.
Yeah, I actually, one, on that point, um, for, I, I, my, I would recommend actually bringing out the cocoa plums if you can do another line of them, um, to put them a little closer to the sidewalk. Uh, and then they could just be, cocoa plums are super cheap, um, so.
Why do that?
Down the road, we're doing them. Well, I think it would help with the generally keeping it screened.
Now, my, my opinion is people are not gonna stand in front of this building and stare and nitpick. They're just gonna drive on by.
Oh, I know. I, I want them to. My goal is to make a wall of, as much green in front of it as possible to, so nobody notices it.
It is a commercial building. It's a working building. I think those big doors are left there because they're going to be putting vehicles inside possibly, and...
Wait, no, the vehicles actually will go in the garage doors.
But that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Right, right.
No, no, I wasn't suggesting replacing those. Oh, my, the door replacement, uh, that I was talking about, with those glasses.
The man doors, right.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it is a commercial building, and it's, it's, and, you know, there's this, the convenience store there, there's all kinds of, there's the church across the street. There's so many commercial buildings on that strip right there, so. I don't think anybody's gonna notice it other than, you know, the landscaping looks great. I'm sorry?
Unless you paint those doors blue.
Oh, yeah, now, I wanted, I wanted the roof blue. That was, I wanted option three.
But those garage doors, you don't wanna call attention to them.
Well, I love the blue as well, but it's, those are like two great big eyeballs.
Eyeballs.
So I, I really would like the blue.
A touch of, like you, Marie said, yeah.
And, um, okay, um, with that said, what would everybody like to do?
Do you call for a public comment on this one?
Oh, a public comment, yes. Uh, opening the floor to public comment. Seeing done, uh, public comment is closed. And...
How would we make a motion on this?
You would choose a, you would choose a, um, an option, one or two.
Yeah, actually, I would like to, is, uh, will no one vote for different doors for the people?
No, no, I'm, I'm good with...
Okay, so, sorry.
Oh, both are different.
Different doors for the people. No, not the garage doors. If we go gray doors, the people door is changed. I mean, actually, I think right now there are doors that are much closer to what I had in mind, um, than what is proposed here, which is also one of the reasons why I think we should have...
Not the same doors. It's like a different one on the right and a different one on the left.
They're different, I think they're different widths there, but especially here, they were different. They're similar.
They are, but it is what it is. It's, and they're, they're gonna be hurricane, everything, so.
So, can I, can I just clarify to you? Those are actually windows. They're not doors. The door, the door, the door is inward.
On the sides.
You don't see them directly. That's a window.
Okay, then, actually, in that case...
In that case, what do we think?
I actually think it shouldn't look like that then, right? I mean, it's just a pane of glass. Can we put, um, muntens in it then, to make it a little...
No, no, let's leave off the mullions.
I will make a motion to approve the color scheme number two for the proposed facade and landscaping for the village annex.
And you, you did say recommend?
Recommend for sure.
Okay, um, okay, then that is, the color scheme two is the one with the grays, gray doors.
It's gray. Gray, scheme number two.
Okay.
Which is gray.
Okay.
Gray.
Okay, I, I, can I, can we add a...
And we have a motion on the floor.
Have a motion on the floor.
Okay, you want...
You need a second.
Um, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you...
I, I, I agree with changing the door.
Yeah, I, I, I'm a no on this too.
So you're an aye?
Aye.
Okay, and I'm, I'm an aye. And all opposed?
No, yes, nay.
And Jeannie?
No.
Okay, three to two, the motion passes.
And just to clarify, so when I'm letting council know the nays, it's because you wanted, can you kind of state why so that I can clarify, say that to council?
Yeah, well, I can explain my, the glass, solid sheets of glass, I think, look like an office park, and I think that they need to blend into, be, that something needs to be done to make them blend into the neighborhood better. So muntens perhaps, or mull, muntens, um, or some other way to denote that it's a, not a solid sheet of glass. And I also really think it's important that we, if, if in the future we ever include parking on the side, that we consult the residents on that street.
Well, I think even the parking, that would be, that would require another meeting if they were gonna carve out parking.
Correct.
And then at that point, they would be, neighbors would be notified, I think.
Correct, yeah. We technically are not approving that as part of the site plan. That's just shown on this, this kind of conceptual landscape plan.
Yeah, okay.
Ms. McLeven, Annie, do you, do you have anything else?
Don't like that door, and I just think there could be something to make it look a little more, I, I don't, I mean, residential.
Maybe residential.
I don't think it's a door.
It's a window.
Yeah, it's just windows.
It's just a window.
It's a window. Looks like a slider to me.
Yeah.
So make it look a little more residential, I think.
A little more residential.
And I have to say, it's not a residence.
It's a residence, the garage.
And, you know, we're sitting here staring at it like this, but you're not going to stare at it. You're just gonna walk on by or drive on by.
It's gonna be an improvement, I mean, whatever we do.
No matter what, the landscaping has changed everything.
It's it. Oh, yeah, I, I don't think people are gonna look at the door and say, oh my god, that doesn't look like a residence. No one's gonna look at that. It's, it's not a residence.
But it's gotta be.
But I do think we should endeavor to make everything as good as possible.
But I'm fine with that. But I'm fine with that.
Okay.
You know, we, we actually had mullions as most of the people in my neighborhood. We've taken, yeah, uh, mullions, I guess.
Oh, I, I...
We took them all off.
Muntens.
We took all of them off.
Yeah.
Because...
Well, they can be a pain.
Well, it's not, it just, it just hampers your view. It hampers your view out the window, and, um, so we got rid of, most of the people in our neighborhood have gotten rid of all those.
Still like muntens.
And, um, and we're residences, but we got rid of the mullions. So I, I don't...
It's everybody's individual taste.
Well, that's all it is, right, yes.
And I don't think anybody would be standing at the street looking at the building.
Nobody will even pitch.
You're too busy driving by or riding your bike.
It's just gonna be an improvement.
Yes, yeah.
We go to the park and walk by it, so it'll be an improvement to walk by it.
From what it was.
Oh, yeah, cuz you'd be looking at the shrubs and everything, and...
It's a very minor disagreement.
Yeah, and so, I, I would like...
It's a very minor disagreement.
The blue roof, though. That was my, anyway. Okay, um, is there anything else?
I did just wanna add that we tend to try and move our December meeting up a little bit to give a little more separation from, from the holidays. It's currently scheduled for Thursday, the 18th. W, w, I've checked, and we could move it up to the 16th, um, if that's, if that's better for everybody. We also may not even have a meeting. We've, the only thing that I think could, could make it is Dequesta Country Club Phase Two, and that's kind of a stretch, so we probably won't have a meeting, but if we did, we could have it on the 16th. So just wanted to make sure that that would work for everyone if we can get there.
Is that, that's a Tuesday, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, yeah, I actually don't think that'll work.
Oh, it doesn't work for you?
I might not, but...
Another question would also be, I mean, does anyone have a conflict on the 18th? So we may not even have to if everyone is okay with it.
I don't have a conflict on the 18th at all.
I can make it work.
I could, no. I don't have a conflict on the 18th. I have to check the 16th, cuz...
Okay.
How about the 18th, Marie?
The 18th would be fine, yeah.
So maybe the 18th works?
Okay. I'll check with Sherry.
No, 18th, okay, 18th is the normal day.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, I'll circle back with Sherry just to see, but like I said, I don't think we'll even have a meeting, so hopefully give you the...
The day is all right with me, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Okay, okay, is there any other areas of discussion? Okay.
Public comments.
No. There's, no, we're, we're, we're closed.
We did that.
We did public comments.
Yeah, we're, we're done with both items, yeah.
Oh, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, meet, motion passed. This meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Your brick is turning into a statue now. You made it through the whole meeting without stopping?